Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the city of Muskegon City Commission Meeting for November 28th, 2017. Hope everybody survived all the turkey and stuffing in your cryptophane comatose state has now passed. Before we begin the proceedings, I'd like to invite up Pastor Tim Cross from Living Word Church to join us in prayer. Anyone that would like to join us, please do, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor?
Thank you. Could you bow your heads with me, please? Father, in this Thanksgiving season, we want to say thank you. We want to be sure that we offer thanks. We say thank you for our high school team that won the state championship. Father, we say thank you as well that what we're seeing in the manufacturing arena here in this area and the jobs and the increase there, we say thank you. We say thank you for this wonderful community. We say thank you for our Board of Commissioners. We just say thank you. But Father, as well, even as it came out today, Father, we ask for your help in this community, and as a community leader, Father, I ask you to help us as we see that even the reports from just a few years ago of how many children were born to unwed mothers, and then we're seeing the results in our schools because of the breakdown of the family. Father, we ask that you would have mercy on our area and that you would restore and heal families, especially in this holiday season. That, Father God, that you said in the Book of Malachi, the last verses of the Old Testament, that if you turn the hearts of the fathers back towards the children and the children towards the fathers, that if that didn't happen, the land would be struck with a curse. So, Father, we ask that you would restore our homes, restore our families, and as well restore morality back to this community. We ask this in Jesus' name, and we ask that you would have mercy on us. So, Father, as this meeting goes on today, we ask for wisdom for each one of our community leaders that are here and the business that they'll discuss and that they'll deal with. I ask that you grant them wisdom and insight for the decisions that need to be made. And, Father, we ask that you would continue to bless our community in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. The Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the principle of liberty and justice for our own.
Thank you, Pastor. May we have the roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Hood?
Here.
Commissioner Warren?
Here.
Commissioner German?
Here.
Commissioner Rentsch-Masibiga?
Here.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Mayor Galrin?
Here.
Well, begin, before we begin the formal proceedings, we do have some important recognitions, beginning with our recognition for our service awards for the, our employees that have dedicated themselves to the sake of our citizens over the years, and so we will recognize years of service. And as we have done in the past, I'll ask the Commissioners to get up out of your seats and join me up front, and you can extend your best wishes to our, to our employees. The first one is for Jeffrey Lewis. Jeffrey Lewis. He lied. Oh, he does. Five years of dedicated service. Very good. Congratulations, Chief. Thank you very much. One of the women in my life, Elizabeth Parker. Ten years of dedicated service here at the city, and of course, dedicated service along with me and Commissioner Johnson for all the hard work and in his neighbor association. Congratulations. What's the S. for?
Stat.
Statist law. I love it. Ten years of dedicated service, helping to get everything planned, and the city looking real good. Thank you, Mike. Robert Woods.
Blue eyes.
And the P. is for perpetually vigilant. Ten years of dedicated service. There you are. Much appreciation. Thanks, sir. Trevor L. Gerlach.
Are you still on the rally razor or no?
No, we're good.
Ten years of dedicated service for Mr. Gerlach. Let's hear it for him. Ten years of dedicated service, keeping me under control. Good luck with that. Juana M. Thompson. And yes, I will return your yard equipment worth it. I do, I got her electric tree trimmer. Ten years of dedicated service, and I'll also include the oil for that. Maria L. De House. Fifteen years of dedicated service. And yes, I promise, I'll make it down here in the hallway. Douglas L. Conrad, Jr. Fifteen years of dedicated service. Stamanes Charad. Fifteen years of dedicated service. Appreciate all those times at 3:00 in the morning with Dave's break when you fix them. Jason L. Bowles. I'm going to keep my head in the clouds, right? Thank you, sir. Andrew J. Ford. Twenty years of dedicated service. And he's promised me twenty more.
No.
Joseph S. Hannan. Twenty years of dedicated service. It's always nice to dad-to-dad talk about suns and beers. Is it Howard or Howie?
Either one.
Okay, Howie. Twenty years of dedicated service. Fifty years of running the streets with me.
Don't show him.
Robert C. Hartman. Forty years of dedicated service. Good job, thanks. Anybody else? We do have others that have not been able to join us this evening that also have given themselves and their public service to keep us safe in all our ways and serve us with a dedication second to none anywhere in the state or in the Midwest, as far as I'm concerned. The level of dedication we got of our city employees is, well, it's enough to make a person get teary-eyed, and I don't mean that as a joke. So, to all of you and those not with us this evening, thank you and congratulations.
Next thing that's not on the agenda is, we just had, we're going to kind of honor and, because we graduated our 2017 Fall Police Academy.
It is on the agenda. I penciled it in.
Okay, good. The mayor is always on top of things. And so, you know, tonight, we're back again. We're here in the spring. We graduated some citizens who go through our police academy, you know, for the citizens, and it's such a joy because I was just talking to Denny again, because he has been the staff member that has run these, and I think we counted thirty-two citizen police academies, and we're going strong. The only goal we've never met is we would like to fill up all, I think, forty-three to forty-six chairs in here, which we haven't, but I'll tell you, each and every year, thirty-two times, Denny has led this charge to get the citizen police academy people here. And tonight, we'll be honoring people who have showed up. We started out with twelve, and I believe we're graduating nine. And I really want to give a special thanks to all those people that spend their Wednesday nights coming here and learn about their police service. And not only is it just Muskegon Police, it's what happens in Muskegon County as a region from the beginning to the end. We appreciate that. It's a transparent service. We want people to know that. We'd be nothing without the citizens, and so we're here tonight to honor those that have come tonight to get their graduate certificates from the mayor. And also, just real special thanks to Denny Powers. As I said, he's done so many of these things, and hopefully there'll be many more, but I'm just thinking he wants to retire here soon, but who knows? Anyways, on that note, I'm going to give it to the mayor. Turn it over to the mayor, and the mayor can do the resolution.
Very good. A resolution in recognition of the Fall 2017 Citizens Academy graduates, whereas the city commission desires to provide citizens with a better understanding of the functions of law enforcement, dispelling misconceptions, and increasing positive communication between citizens and police, and whereas it is the desire of the Muskegon City Commission to encourage cooperation between the public and law enforcement to positively impact our communities, now therefore be it resolved that the Muskegon City Commission hereby congratulates and recognizes all of our academy graduates for their faithful attendance, completion, and graduation from the ten-week Fall 2017 Citizens Police Academy, and this is presented and given on behalf of the Muskegon City Commission this 28th day of November 2017. Congratulations.
Okay, if I could have, if I got the mayor come up here, and Chief's going to come up here, and I'm going to actually read the names that are actually in the resolution. Those were omitted intentionally, so I could read them now, and you can come forward, and you'll get your resolution from the mayor and the chief of police, and then I'm going to have a few words after that. But I believe I saw three of our members here, but there were nine that graduated. But I'm going to read the names. As I read them, if you're here, please come forward and receive your resolution. Henrik Allrun. Janario Flores, also known as Henry. Jaclyn Knight, which I don't believe I saw her. Anthony Laskowitz. Amanda Miller. Dustin Phillips, I do believe I saw. Robin Richardson, I don't believe is here. Okay, if we can have a big hand for them, these people that gave up ten weeks out of their lives. And while I have the floor, I'm going to do a shameless plug, I guess. You would call that. I do this every single time. We are now taking applications for the spring session, so I just want to give you a little bit of information on this. Basically, it runs you through the entire criminal justice system. It's absolutely free. It's open to the public. We just need you to fill out an application. You can do that at the police department, or you can go to muskegonpolice.com. It's on the website, and you can get the application there. But it runs for ten weeks, every Wednesday night from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m., and it runs you through the entire criminal justice system. We start with central dispatch, takes you to all the patrol work, all the detective work, and everybody likes the CSI stuff. That's the stuff people have fun with. But we get into domestic violence. We have every woman's place come in, the county sheriff comes in, there's a jail tour. Just everything you can think of having to do with the criminal justice, and the prosecutor's office comes in, family court, and we end up on the last day with a mock crime scene, which the class has hopefully taken really good notes, and they get to play the detectives on that last night. And these people can tell you that that's a blast. We've been doing this twice a year since 2002, and the main thing we're trying to do is get good information out there, because there's a lot of bad information, a lot of misinformation. So, our main goal is to get good information out there and then also build those relationships with the community. So, nothing we talk about during these classes is top secret, and we always tell the students, go out and share and encourage other people to attend. So, if you know of anybody that's interested, we get people that are high school students that are interested in criminal justice, to career tech, to college, that want to go into the field, to retired people that have no tie to law enforcement whatsoever, they just want to come and get good information. So, it's open to the general public, and I would encourage you. It's a great time and gets a lot of good information. All right? Thank you.
May we have the consent agenda, please?
Approval of minutes, city clerk. Summary request to approve minutes of the November 13th, 2017 work session meeting and the November 14th, 2017 regular meeting. Staff recommendation, approval of the minutes. Scanning Services, city manager. Summary request. This past summer, the city engaged with Alcor Gare LLC to scan a number of documents for digital archiving and storage. The scanning was completed on a per-sheet basis. Many of the documents were old building plans and site plans. The total quantity was unknown at the onset of the process. Upon completion, a total of 64,883 documents had been scanned at a cost of $18,072.65. Staff is seeking formal approval to expense the $18,072.65. Staff recommendation, authorize $18,072.65 in documenting, scanning, and archiving costs. Sale of Parkland Lot, city manager. Summary request. The city commission previously authorized the city manager to enter into an agreement to sell Pigeon Hill Brewing a portion of the city-owned parking lots on Shoreline Drive to accommodate the company's expansion plans. The agreement originally called for subparcels one and two to be sold to Pigeon Hill Brewing and subparcel three to be retained by the city of Muskegon. Upon completion of the formal property survey, it was determined that the size of parcel A is now insufficiently sized to accommodate Pigeon Hill's expansion. Parcel B is sufficiently sized to accommodate the expansion. Accordingly, staff has asked the city commission to amend the original purchase agreement by replacing parcel A with parcel B, which would leave parcel A in the city's ownership and place parcel B in Pigeon Hill Brewing's ownership. Staff recommendation, authorize city manager to sign the purchase agreement and proceed with the sale of parcel B.
Commissioners, you've heard the consent agenda presented. Are there any items you wish to have removed for further discussion? Commissioner Warren?
Item C, please.
See it is. Anything else? If not, Commissioner Johnson?
If there are no others, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented minus item C. Second?
It has been moved by Commissioner Johnson, seconded by Commissioner German, to approve the consent agenda as presented minus item C. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rentsch-Masipiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hood?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Commissioner Warren, item C.
I move to authorize the city manager to sign the purchase agreement and proceed with the sale of parcel B.
Support. It's been moved by Commissioner Warren, supported by Commissioner Johnson, to authorize the city manager to sign the purchase agreement, proceed with the sale of parcel B, referencing the negotiations with Pigeon Hill Brewing. Commissioner Warren?
So, my question for the city manager is, with that two-year abatement, that, well, the twelve-year, but they're only going to apply for ten years, that whole thing, will that entire number go into the city's budget?
Um, yes. Well, technically, technically, it's in the DDA, so it'll go into a city-controlled, city-controlled budget, but it's, but it's in the DDA. So, anything that would have otherwise been abated would pass through to the DDA.
Okay.
Anything else?
Quick question. I guess, from my understanding from your email, and this is to the city manager.
Yes.
The swap that we're doing is pretty much even exchange, really nothing to really worry about, or be...
Yeah, it's, it's even to what we thought, what we thought originally. When we say subparcel one and two, we now call this collectively parcel A. We originally thought there were like 77,000 square feet and some change. They ended up being like 55,000 square feet and some change once we had the survey done. Turned out that was too small to accommodate Pigeon Hill, but we had the other side of the parking lot, which was again about 78,000 square feet, once you accounted for Fifth Street, I guess, being not included in there. And so, yeah, so what we're selling them is on, is very, very similar in size to what we thought we were selling them before we did the survey, although subparcel A and B technically are not similarly sized. We thought they were, but they're about 25,000 square feet or 20,000 square feet difference.
Yeah. And the lot that they're getting, now, that lot wasn't appraised, though, correct?
No, it was not appraised. We had parcels, subparcels one and two appraised, and we didn't appraise the other side because we, we weren't planning on selling it. We essentially extrapolated the value of subparcel one, two, or subparcel A and applied it to B on a per-square footage basis because they were so similarly located, so similarly sized, and similarly, you know, amenitized, I guess.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson?
Oh, I just was wondering, I see one of the founding partners of Pigeon Hill Brewing is here, and I was wondering if Mr. Kemp would like to get up and maybe just update us on, you know, your, your outlook for moving forward with the production facility there and construction and whatnot.
Sure. Joel Kemp with Pigeon Hill, 500 West Western. You know, we've been working on this deal for quite a while. We're ready to rock and roll. We have a lot of contractors, engineers lined up with authorized agreements to proceed right away, so we're just kind of waiting on this agreement to, the formality of the approval of this agreement. So, ready to go.
So, you probably, it sounds like you're, if we approve this tonight, we sign it tonight, tomorrow, you foresee breaking ground and construction getting going very promptly, like within the next week or so?
Um, well, not necessarily the next week, because I didn't, I didn't have any drawings or anything done yet.
Okay.
I mean, breaking ground will probably be in like March, but December 11th, we'll be, we'll be boring some holes, and we got some due diligence to do yet, because there's a, once we get the agreement approved, and there's still due diligence to do, it's still, you know, still could have some issues underground. We don't, we don't know yet, but we'll be, we'll be doing some borings. We got the environmental guys looking at it, so we're just moving forward on the due diligence at this point.
Okay. Excellent. And your plans for completion are and production to get, to get going?
I would say if we can break ground by March, which will give us a few months to get the designs and the drawings and all that stuff passed through, Safe Bill, we should be up and running by the end of 2018 is the goal.
Okay. And one thing that we had talked about previously when we examined the previous sale and agreement was the importance of either incorporating retail from the get-go or situating the facility in a way that doesn't preclude retail eventually down the road, given where it's located and the long-held goal of our citizens and the city to connect our waterfront to our downtown. And one way to do that is having continuous retail, drawing people to the waterfront. Is that still the expectation from, from the get-go to situate it so it doesn't preclude retail, essentially?
Yeah, we really haven't changed our plans at all. It's just, we're just swapping parcels, so we're still going to plan on doing the tours and feeding off all that from Western Avenue Tap Room Retail.
Okay. Yeah, and if I can add to, I think I pointed out in my memo that we did secure about $15,000 grant from the MEDC with the sole purpose of helping us and helping them design that in a way that it, that it improves connectivity and doesn't become a problem, you know, become a barrier to connectivity. So, the MEDC saw that it was important, and they actually reached out to us, and today we see you're selling this, this property. Can we help make sure that it ends up meeting with what the city's vision is for connectivity of the waterfront? We obviously said we would gladly take them up on, on the investment. Excellent. You read my mind, because I was just going to ask you about that and how that does play into their planning as well as our expectations for how that gets developed. And then also, it's actually kind of good to know that you're not planning on breaking ground until March, because as you know, the Maginot and Muskegon Lake process is in the works, and we'll have a presentation come January, so that may help inform you as well as to how to situate it and what, what to do there and what potential retail would be ideal there if you can incorporate that down the road. So, yeah, it sounds like the states, state, city, private entities working together, collaborating, moving us forward and getting our downtown further developed, and hopefully be that catalyst for integrating our waterfront with our downtown, and you'll be a key, key part of that. So, thank you.
Yep. You're welcome.
Any other questions for Joel while we go? Thank you, Mr. Kemp. Commissioner Warren, did I see your...
Question was answered.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Anything else, Commissioners? Roll call, please.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rentsch-Masipiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. New business, please.
Concurrent for the Housing Board of Appeals notice in order to demolish the following public safety, 638 Oak. Summary request. This is to request that the city commission concur with the findings of the Housing Board of Appeals that the structure located at 634 Oak Avenue is unsafe, or sorry, I'm sorry, 638 Oak Avenue is unsafe, substandard, a public nuisance, and that it be demolished within 30 days. It is further requested that administration be directed to obtain bids for the demolition of the structure, and that the mayor and city clerk be authorized and directed to execute a contract for demolition with the lowest responsible bidder, or staff may issue infraction tickets to the owner, agent, or responsible party if they do not demolish the structure. Staff recommendation to concur with the Housing Board of Appeals decision to demolish all structures on the property.
Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak on 638 Oak Avenue? Take the motion. Commissioner German?
I move to concur with the Housing Board of Appeals decision to demolish all structures on the property, 638 Oak Avenue.
Support.
Been moved by Commissioner German, supported by Commissioner Warren, to concur with the Housing Board of Appeals decision, decision to demolish all structures at 638 Oak Avenue. Any discussion?
I just have a comment. When these requests come in for us to demolish these properties, it's very important for the resident, whoever owns that property, to show up. Therefore, it leaves us no choice to go ahead and move forward with the process, so unfortunately, there's no one in the audience, I mean, in the chambers that's going to represent this property, so that's the reason for the decision that I'm going to make tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah.
Anything else? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Rentsch-Masipiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Any other business, Commissioners? Commissioner, what's my saving gun?
Sure. It's getting to be the end of the year, as we all know, and I have here the, the Community Relations Committee is, we should look ahead towards that when we meet as a Community Relations Committee and make appointments for the terms that are expiring on January 31st, 2018. So, I thought it might be good just to have a brief discussion. I've been working with Ann, and I've gotten some input from some Commissioners, and wanted to see how we wanted to handle this this year.
to see how we wanted to handle this this year. Last year, we talked about a couple of things that we, you know, noticed in the appointment process. Last year, we held that kind of a recruitment fair or event, and we had a certain timing towards, for everything, and so some things were good and some things could be improved. So I thought maybe we could just at least start to be aware of it, not that we need to decide everything today, but a big part of it is looking at the terms that need to be filled. So I prepare, or actually, I didn't, but the city clerk's office prepared a sheet that shows all the appointments that are coming up. And if you look over it, you can see that a number of our boards are kind of technical. So some of them are positions that, you know, we, it's kind of hard to fill, like the Construction Board of Appeals and Board of Review and Civil Service. And some of these are boards or commissions where people are fulfilling a certain role, representing an organization. So just to keep that in mind. And then a number, some people also were recently appointed to their term, so they may be filling in for resignation or something like that. So there's a number of them that are, were actually really only appointed in the last year. So their term is expiring, but they didn't serve a full term. So we may want to keep that into consideration. And we do have quite a few applicants from last year. I only have one copy of this, but we had sheets prepared like this last year that had all the applicants that had indicated for each board and then, you know, if they were interested in any other committee, we had that. And a number of people we weren't able to appoint last year. So I just wanted to get some input as to if, how we wanted to handle this, if we want to hold like a recruitment fair. I think we have initiated the process of contacting every person whose term is expiring and letting them know and thanking them that they're, you know, for their service and letting them know that they could be eligible to be reappointed if they completed application and just trying to indicate their interest if they're going to do that or not. We just started that yesterday. So we're asking that people get that completed by December the 6th or 7th. So that would be ahead of our work session in December. So we could have a better idea then. But, so I was kind of, we were kind of struggling about whether we should hold an event. Last year, we held the event, I think, around, during our first week of meetings. So it was like the work session or the first general session in January. And then that made it, we held our kind of a marathon meeting the second Tuesday of January last year where we met early and tried to, met as the Community Relations Committee. And we weren't even able to finish all of those appointments on that. It was like January the 24th or something. So we had to wrap up in February, so we didn't meet our January 31st deadline. So if we do want to hold like a recruitment fair, we'd like to do it sooner. And it'd be possible to do it, but we have the holidays. And we also are a little bit concerned about wanting to kind of see how things shake out a little bit before we go. You know, last year, we had a pretty good idea that there was, you know, a number of openings, but I think we're not, at this point, we haven't gotten the returns, you know, the responses from people. And we're just looking at this for the first time. So I just, you know, if we did want to hold something, we'd probably be looking at around December the 12th, 15th in that area. I think we have a commission meeting on the 12th. But again, maybe, and maybe we can't, shouldn't decide that until we get a better idea. I'm not sure what people's pleasure is, but we thought maybe it'd be worth discussing for a minute just so that we can set it up in a good process, so.
Any thoughts for the chair? Commissioner Warren?
I really like the idea of holding some sort of event that not only highlights these different boards, A, for recruitment, but also for people to be aware of them. I don't know that the general public is necessarily aware of all these different channels and like when we talk about demolishing buildings, the whole process, there's a big process involved with that. So just as a kind of an awareness piece as well as potential recruitment, but I think it's an opportunity, I really like the idea of it almost being branded as how to be involved in your community, how to be involved in your local government. And we could plug the Citizens Police Academy and we could, you know, there's a lot of ways to be involved that a Google search doesn't show or that, you know, don't necessarily come into somebody's mind that's not very familiar with City Hall or with the process. So I think it could be a really positive event, really positive outreach that this could be part of it, but maybe some other things could be tacked on as well to increase engagement.
Anything else for Dan to chew on as we go forward and get this organized?
I think Dan did a great job.
Yeah. Hard work, you and everybody at the clerk's office.
They do a lot of work.
Yes. Remember, extra cookies for Hannah. Commissioner Warren?
I do just have another comment about this sheet specifically. Is it possible to get a sheet like this that not only shows the start of this term, but if they've served on, for previous years, like if they started serving on the board in 2000, but this is, I know this is this term, but is that possible?
Unfortunately, the older records weren't kept in a way to make, yeah, and that is something that we are changing in our office, but historically, that was never tracked. So it would take us quite a bit of time. I mean, we'd have to search minutes.
Is that something on the application? I don't remember from memory. When they refill out an application, if it says, are you currently serving on a board, it doesn't say like, how long have you served on that board or anything?
I don't think so.
No.
No, but I'm not sure exactly what it does say. We can look.
That would be good information to them, too.
No, it would be, absolutely.
Yeah, I was going to wonder, wondering the same thing.
Commissioner Johnson?
I would concur about holding an event. I think that's a worthwhile event to have. We had good turnout last year, and I think it's worthwhile. So I would appreciate if we were to do that again, whether it's next month or January. I guess we probably ideally want to do it in December to get.
Yeah, I think it'd be ideal. I believe that we are not going to have a second meeting in December, so.
Our first work session.
Yeah. So there is the, oh, the week, you know, of the, if this calendar is correct, the week of the 17th or 18th is, you know, still a week before the Christmas holiday. But we could even possibly do it on the 12th in coincidence with the commission meeting or we could do it separately. So, I mean, I think we can just take that, this advice and try to figure out what's the best way forward.
You'd probably get a better feel once you start getting the responses.
Yeah, we've also started to get responses from staff. Another aspect of the yearly process is getting attendance reports and, you know, any other issues that are reported by the staff liaisons to the committees, which we, you know, take those under advisement as well. So that process has been started, so we're collecting that. So I do think within a week or two, we'll have quite a bit more information. So I'd say, you know, we could probably figure that out and then let everyone know what the plan is ahead of the next work session.
Okay. And in terms of the talenting applications, I think on mine it says, or on the application itself, it says that it's just held for a year. Do we hold them longer in reality?
We do hold them longer, yes.
So someone that's filled it out over a year, like within the past two years, will still be under consideration? They don't actually have to?
We usually hold it two years.
Two years.
And then we do destroy it.
Okay.
But we do go further than that. We have several, currently, we have several really good applications on file from that last open house that people, we didn't have openings to put those individuals on, and several of them will call us on a monthly basis or stop in to see if there's anything, so.
Okay. Have we, since last year, have we standardized the attendance, how attendance is tracked and reported, like in uniform ways?
We are still working on that process.
Okay.
So it is not, we'll get there.
Okay. And just as a matter of housekeeping, I think we still just need to clean up that policy or update it because the policy in the Community Relations Handbook says that attendance is supposed to be reported to the commission monthly, and we only need it really annually.
Yeah.
So I think, just for clarity, just to fix that at the next CRC, I suppose.
Sure.
And then I just have one more question. With regard to the Business Improvement District, have we gotten any indication that the bid, and I wish Dave were still here, actually, that the bid is going to accept our nominations? Because, you know, I had a conversation with our legal counsel about this, is the Enabling Act had suggested that the bid board going forward accepts nominations from within, amongst the property owners within the bid, and they put forward the nominations to us for us just to vote up and down, basically. And so are they, are they going to be accepting our nominations or are we expected to accept their nominations going forward? Have we had that conversation or dialogue with the bid?
No, not formally. I think we were planning to treat that similar to how we do other staff liaisons. So I think we were going to reach out to Dave Alexander and see how he wanted to handle it. I don't know if we were, I assumed we were going to be open to his input into it, and I'm not sure if he was going to formalize that through his bid board, but I don't know what legal counsel says about it.
Sorry. I don't know if there's been any discussions by recollection. The statute is, if the bid board recommends, and we approve of the jab.
So that's what I would, I would guess that that's the direction we're going, so. But we were going to begin that, so hopefully we can have it ironed out by January 24.
There is the statute.
Yeah. And then one other change, oh, sorry, Deb.
You can go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to say that we are gonna, I think one thing we had last year, we're going to try to have the staff liaisons present when we discuss their different committees. That was a note we made last time. So it may be difficult. Hopefully, we won't keep them here for hours waiting for a two-minute process about their committee or board, but that way at least we can, they can be here and we can direct any questions to them at that point. Deb?
I was just going to note with the event that I think it was very positive to show appreciation where everybody that was serving on a board was invited. It was a good opportunity to show appreciation, and I think that should be noted, too.
Okay. Yep. Yep, I agree.
And it was appreciated, but honestly, they really took note.
Yep. Yep. So, and like I said, well, hopefully soon we'll know if they reply sooner rather than later, and then we can, folks that are, I think we've gotten a couple of people who indicated they're going to resign already through this process. So we do know that there's some longstanding people that are not going to be serving anymore, so.
Addy Sanders-Randle.
Yeah, it was one.
Serves with 20-some years.
Yeah. So I think that would be, it would be great, so.
Can I go way back?
So I think that's it for this, at this point.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other busyness outside of CRC? If not, we'll open up to any public participation if there is any members of the public that would like to address the commission at this time. Feel free to come on up, give your name and address, and we'll start the clock with three minutes. If not, Vice Mayor?
There's nothing else, I move to adjourn.
Support. It's been moved by the Vice Mayor, supported by Commissioner Rinsesvassibiga, to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, that's what I was looking for. Enter your opposition. Okay, thank you. Thank you, everyone. Thanks, everyone, for coming out and again for some of our employees. Thank you, my luck again.